Welcome. My name is Christopher Paisley. I'm a Philadelphia public school teacher. Today, I got to sit down with Helene Conroy Smith. Helene is running for the Haverford Township School Board this November. Helene is a mother of three in the Haverford Township School District, which is a suburb of Philadelphia. It's in Delaware County, PA. Helene is also a special ed educator in the Ridley Township School District. And I got to discuss with Helene some of the issues facing the Haverford Township School District, as well as some of the other ideas that she would like to implement if she does make it onto the Haverford Township School Board this November.
My name's Helene Conroy Smith. I'm a mother of three. I live in Haverford Township. I'm also a teacher. And I've been teaching for a long time. But prior to me going into the classroom, I was a consultant for kids with autism and did a lot of behavior analysis and looking at data and behavior. And prior to that, I worked at Children's Seashore House as a behavior analyst, working with kids through grants and working in insurance and helping them. So my experience has been mostly with kids as well as with organizations. And I started my own consulting business in between my children so that I could have more time with them. And then when I realized I would have more time being a teacher and having summers off and then I could plan after they went to bed, I decided, you know what, I better go back into the classroom. So I've been teaching for well over 20 years. And I love kids. I volunteer at my schools, my children's schools. I've always been involved because I think school has to have the support of the community. It's a marriage. And then I also get to know people and I get to experience other people's children and see the world through different points of view. And I really did. I really loved it. So that's why now I'm running for school board here in Haverford Township. Last year, not last year, it's been almost now two years, they decided to keep our schools closed. And I watched how it impacted my children and I watched how it impacted my neighbors' children. We have a very large neighborhood of kids. And when you see kids struggle, when you see parents struggling, when you see people crying and when you see people that feel unheard and not listened to and your school board's nine zero Democrats, you decide like, I don't like what's happening. And I've attended school board meetings. And once the fifth grade children were shown a Brain Pop BLM video, then I became more of an activist than just a mom. And so I started to see what was happening. And in my opinion, the board and our school district administrators were not listening to the people. And so I decided in the end of December, the beginning of January, to run for school board. Once you close out parents and your community and you only listen to a small body of your constituents, and it's a very small vocal body that has political ties to large organizations, then I became the mom who was annoyed and I had enough and I'm gonna step up. So people see me probably as angry some of the time. But I just, when you work at it and work at it, you just get tired of not being heard.
So when you go to a school board meeting and you're saying the board's only listening to a small group, if you're in a school board meeting in terms of percentages, is it the majority of the parents who feel, in terms of the way you feel about issues, and the board just doesn't listen to like over half of the parents at the meetings? Or is it, how does the dynamic work in the school board meetings?
So for a long time, parents were watching the meetings and trusted they were doing the right thing. COVID really, I think, caused a lot of parents to pause and say, what is really happening? I've had my pulse on this for quite some time, having two daughters with dyslexia and understanding that the district really was not doing what they needed to do for kids with reading disabilities. So I kind of have seen what was going on. And honestly, it was an issue over taxes that really alerted so many people. We've been going to meetings, a friend of mine, and talking and talking about issues. It's not just been about critical race theory issues. It's been about transparency, financial transparency. What programs are we teaching in our schools? What does our curriculum look like? You can go on our website and find no meat. There's curriculum guides, and there may be some standards, but there's no meat, there's no curriculum there. So parents want to see what their children are being taught. And then also, I think, that tax issue, that tax issue, people were like, holy cow, other people feel like me. I've been sitting silent. When I ran in the general election in May, I came home and I cried. And I wasn't upset because my husband's like, it's okay, Kay, if you lose. And I said, I'm not crying because I might lose. I'm crying for all the people that came up to me and said, thank you for giving a voice to us. And the whispering, like, I don't like what's happening. And people no longer feeling empowered. And so I've been working on educating them, helping them, talking about the points that their concerns, how to frame it to the school district, sit and meet with the school district. So I have been behind the scenes, working with many families. And people are afraid. People are afraid to be canceled. You know, people are afraid to be talked about in moms groups. You know, my name was drug through the mud through moms groups. And the screenshots that I would get, and I said to my friends, I'm like, listen, I appreciate this. However, God, my mother always said, like, God says, do not, you have no business knowing what anybody else thinks about you. So don't worry about it. So I didn't worry about it. But parents are afraid. People are afraid. And I think now that the tax issue, more people voiced their concern. It was like the tipping point, you know, that book by Malcolm Gladwell, that was the tipping point for us.
So when you say the tax issue, could you get specific? Like in terms of what specifically, when you say the tax issue?
I'm sorry, yeah, the tax. So I assume everybody's from Delaware County and they're not. Delaware County had a tax assessment throughout the entire county. Haverford School District decided not to go against any of the people that were appealing the taxes. Like they weren't going to support the people who wanted to appeal the tax assessment. So our assessments were done. They weren't done correctly. It was, I don't know how to say this, but everyone agrees that it was like a poor assessment of all our homes. It was done unfairly. And there's even on the blocks, the same block, there may be a hundred thousand dollar difference, a fifty thousand dollar difference. And so that issue, people started to come to the meetings to talk about Haverford going against Delaware County and suing them and saying, this is not a good assessment. We want another assessment. And so parents or end stakeholders said, we really would like for you to join in this appeals process. Because what had happened was the year before, this school district fought with those homeowners and said, we're not going to allow for you to appeal your assessment. So because of that non-appeal of assessment, that became a huge issue in our town.
All right. So when you say that there's other parents and there's a fear of speaking out, maybe being canceled, or there's, sometimes people are intimidated. In your opinion, are more and more parents feeling more comfortable to speak out? Are more parents feeling comfortable over the last year to kind of voice their concerns? Or is there still like a people who are kind of hesitant and under the radar? Is there still a silent majority?
There is. There is. I mean, it's the private messages, it's the private texts, it's the private emails that I get. And I have a team of people too. They are working hard to get the word out. They have received the same messages privately, please don't share. And that's the thing, people are still afraid, but there are more people with a voice. And that is, it concerns that small group that has been running our town now for quite a while. And that small group is called the Haverford Community Action Network. And they are a division of Indivisible. And so we are saying enough. And I hope that the Democrats in this town say enough to these socialists because it's a very small group. It's not all the Democrats. I have friends that are Democrats, are good people. And they don't believe in a lot of what is happening in our town. And so people need to start to step up and say enough. You know, we work at this. We all work. We shop at the same stores. We work together. We help each other with our children. We attend the same schools. We need to just say enough and we need to work together to bring it back to a sense of community here in Haverford.
How about, I don't know if you want to get into the specifics. You brought up the one Black Lives Matter video in fifth grade, in a fifth grade classroom. And you said that was one of the things that came onto your radar, that brought you, that came to your attention and decided to make you vocal. Could you get into the details about that? What was that activity?
Sure. So I just want to get to my notes here. I watched the video nine times because I would call propaganda. It starts off with a parent, like a warning for parents. And so right there, and then to me, that's controversial topics. Parents should have been informed that that was going to happen. And I want to say that I have confirmed that in Haverford School District, teachers do not have to have approval for supplemental material. Even though Brain Pop is an agreed upon use, okay? So anything on Brain Pop is free use. Anything can be brought in from anywhere for supplemental material. So this was a supplemental lesson. And so the Brain Pop starts off with a parental consent. Parental consent was not asked. We have police officer children in the classes that it was shown in. We also have people that work in other forms of law and law enforcement in the classroom as well as people who work in, like in the public arena for news journalism. So the video talks about how George Floyd was killed. It presents him in a very lovely manner. It's very uplifting, not to be afraid, which was good. You know, kids should not be afraid. They're young. They're impressionable. There were some untruths in the statements. Then it moves on to talk about how police officers at times, it can be dangerous for kids of color. And I thought, oh my goodness, we run drills. We run drills in our schools with our police officers, safe school drills. We run them. So who does the kid of color or who does the kid who may be a mixed race, who do they run to if a shooter comes in the building? Because either way, it's not looking good for them. I mean, in my mind, as a child, when I think of a child, I would start becoming anxious about that. And then you look at it from the lens of a child, we're in the middle of a pandemic. And the next piece at the end, they talk about how the news media sensationalizes, and they use that word, things to stir emotion and that it's not always true and they don't always provide the accurate information. And I thought, children, you know, my child doesn't watch the news. We don't have the news on in my home. However, other children watch the news. And they're watching the news and learning about COVID in real time. And so do they believe the news or not believe the news? Should they wear a mask? Not wear a mask. Should they get a shot? Not get a shot. Should they be afraid or not be afraid? Because the news is telling me to be afraid and for all these things. It was wrong. And I used that narrative right against them when I emailed the superintendent about it. Because I talked about the concerns that I had with all of the issues. And so when we look at what we show children, it should be definitely viewed. It should be definitely discussed. And there should be other opinions about it. Now, had it had been framed differently, had there been more instructive lessons? You know, I don't know, but as an educator, I consider it soft propaganda. And why are we giving this to our kids? Do we really need to give this to them? And do we need to start that feeling of worry? Because I feel like that's what we did by showing that video.
There's another Brain Pop video that I saw. It was a Black Lives Matter video. I think it was a little bit different than the one you're talking about, but it was not complete information. There was some propaganda, misinformation in there. And it was supposed to be to elementary school kids. And I noticed that kind of thing. And you brought up a good point where you're talking about groups, especially some activist groups where they bring in what they call teacher resources. The teacher resources don't have to be, a lot of times, it doesn't go through the school board. It doesn't go through the state standards. It's just, here's a teacher resource, and activist groups bring them in, and then it ends up in the classroom. And it's not really being policed in that kind of a way. So I've noticed that as well, these quote unquote teacher resources that come through. So it's definitely something that parents should pay attention to.
I was gonna say, they really should. And my concern is that how much of the other things are coming in? You know, if the NRA brought something like that in, don't you think parents would be up in arms? And I brought that to the attention of my school district. You know, once you open up to one group, you've opened up yourself to multitudes of other groups. And it depends now on your teacher. So you can learn to be an activist from your teacher in third grade and maybe fourth grade. Your teacher can undo some of the things that happened in third grade. We really need to be careful in what we give our kids.
I agree. And also too, if you're gonna give the kids some what you would call controversial things or edgy stuff, it should always be, they should get both sides as well. A lot of times you see, it's just the one position and the kids don't get both positions. And that's definitely not, that's not education. It's more indoctrination when they're not getting both sides of the issue. So you started a group called Give Kids Education. You want to talk a little bit about that?
My group, so it's a pretty quiet group. And we've kept it that way because we really want to be empowering and education, and use it for education. And that group actually started me receiving lessons dropped off at my home in an envelope or was given to someone through someone, emails or whatever, whatsohaveyou. And then we really started to dove into what really is happening in our school district. Parents have asked for curriculum and they were told that they had to meet with the principal in order to get the curriculum. Once you need to start meeting with people, that's a problem. That's a problem. There's no transparency. And there is no transparency. And that really, for me, my daughter will not be returning to Haverford this year. She's gonna remain in the cyber charter school, which I'm very happy with. Because unless you're gonna be able to give me the curriculum, which my cyber charter school does, I have the whole curriculum and I have parent supplements to it, then I have concern. And we, my group, Give Kids Education, we've been about educating parents and empowering parents and stakeholders and have said, you need to ask questions. You need to say, I would like to see blah, 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 what their rights are. You know, under the federal guides, parents have the right to see the curriculum. So when the school district says, well, you have to come in and meet with us so we can talk about it, parents should be able to go in and to look at the book. They should be able to look at the book. They should be able to see the lessons. And the problem is in today, we now, I'm an educator, we don't have to hand in our lesson plans to our principals anymore. You know, so principals don't really know what's happening. So for me, it's been about to parents, you have every right to question this and go meet with the principal and the teacher and ask the questions. So let's give kids education, not indoctrination. And let's see what we can do as parents and stakeholders to hold the district accountable for showing us the information. And you know, since we've been doing this, there's a lot of lies. I'm just gonna call it what it is. They call it disinformation, misinformation. It's lying. You know, I was claimed that I don't want programming for kids and I want books banned. And what I've asked for and what I've said repeatedly in the beginning, and not many people were paying attention, and that's okay. They can go back and watch the meetings because I don't need to keep rehashing. They need to go back and look and see. We asked for things to be posted, all curriculum to be posted online, all lesson plans to be posted online, and also asked for an opt-out option. So that's what our group has been asking for, just to get information. And so that's what Give Kids does. It's really about empowering and helping and providing resources to families. I've been also providing them with links to the state so that they can also contact the state, what their legal responsibilities are. I've also been giving them information to attorneys so that they can speak to attorneys. Because it's not only about the education, the curriculum, it's also about special ed education issues. You know, there's several kids that didn't receive appropriate education during COVID. They weren't afforded what they needed. And so parents have come to me and I said, you try to work it out, have a meeting. And parents are having two and three IEP meetings and they're still not getting anywhere. That's a problem. That's a problem. So it's about giving kids and parents education.
So what percentage of the time are you not getting the kind of information that you want? Like it's not as transparent as you want. You're not getting the information that you want. Is this happening half the time? Is it happening?
Ninety percent of the time.
Ninety percent of the time?
Ninety percent of the time. We're in the process of still getting a survey answer. I'm in the process of mediation and OOR, the Office of Open Records, has our appeal. The school district got off easy and because I am very, I would say that I'm fair. You know, I don't want to take advantage of anyone and I don't like people not to be notified. So the school district did not have someone to file the appeal. So the appeal process was over June 30th. And I would have won the appeal because they didn't respond. So I would be awarded the information. And then the OOR officer emailed me and said, this district hasn't responded. I'm gonna give them an extra day. And I was like, you know what, that's fine. And so what I did was, I took that copy of that email and I forwarded it on to our superintendent. And I said, I'm not sure if you're aware, but I want to give you a heads up. And so the district then decided to file an appeal. And so they gave me this rigmarole and the documents are not public information, all this other stuff, and completely, completely false. I asked for names redacted. I mean, it's just ridiculous. And so now we're still in an appeal. And then the appeals officer found that they gave me a document that was marked with someone else's name on it. So they gave me a response to my appeal that belonged to someone else that also filed a right to know. So now we're in the process. I have to wait till August 24th to see if I will be awarded the information that I requested. So everything has to go through right to know. Contracts, there are, I asked for a comprehensive audit report, financial report. You know, I had to go through right to know for that. It was on the school board, it was on the website, and then it was gone off the website. So I had to ask for that physically. And again, I don't know where money is coming in, coming out. I don't know what kind of contracts we have. We have several contracts for equity, well over sixty thousand dollars in the 2020 school year. And that doesn't encompass all the other contracts we had years before. Again, that goes back to the taxes. You know, we're ballooning and spending on things that we don't need or repeatedly spending on things that we're supposed to have in place. That's a problem. So I'm not getting ninety percent of what I asked for unless I file it through right to know.
How about this question? Because this has also come up a lot, the critical race theory. I don't know if you want to get back talking about that because that's a big topic in education, K to 12 education. What do you think about that in terms of, when we say critical race theory, the critical pedagogy and these methods that are being used, no matter what you want to call it with semantics? What's your experience with this going on in the district? And what do you think are the solutions? And what do you think should be done in terms of this whole issue, critical race theory?
Well, our district will say that they're not teaching critical race theory and they're working on diversity, equity and inclusion. And how dare I not want equity? Equity, and I said this before to them, equity means we all end up in the same place. You know, and not every kid's gonna go to college and not every kid's gonna join the Marines and not every kid's gonna go out and get a job right away. You know, so we need to look at this and say, how can we give everyone an equal opportunity? Right? So it's really about equal opportunity. And that's what I see it as, let's look at things from that way, from the way of equality, not equity. Because equality means that we're all gonna have an opportunity. And so that's what I really would like to see. So when we look at critical race theory, it really does disrupt the patterns that we see with kids. Because kids now are always thinking about race. And that is not what we want them to see. And we talk about, it's racist to say that your child's colorblind. While I have three children, all who have children who have friends of color, of Asian, Latin American, and that's what I want, you know? And Haverford is eighty, I think it's now eighty-three percent white. But we go down to the city, I have family in the city, we shop at 69th Street. You know, my kids have been in the Asian market. That's kind of your experience culture when you don't have it necessarily where you live, right? When you don't experience those other cultures. But we do have a strong Asian population here as well as Irish. I mean, I know they're white, but they're still immigrants and they're Irish. And they're different. So there is diversity. And then when we talk about inclusion, it's inclusion for all. But our district is really sending a message that it's only one group. And so they're using it as people of color. And so they had an Asian hate day. We were gonna address Asian hate this past year. However, we have yet to address the Cubans that are coming over and that are being killed right now. They're not talking about that. It really is a set agenda. And it's very evident by which the groups that they're working with, they have a group called BIPOC, which is fairly new in our community. And I'm great. I think that everyone should feel welcome and feel part of a group. And we are, some of us are gonna look different. Some of us are all gonna come from different backgrounds. I mean, part of critical race theory, going back to critical theory, it really is about understanding differences. And now that they've kind of like enmeshed this whole thing and tried to put it in K-12, I feel like it's a word salad. And what they're doing is dangerous because it really doesn't have what it needs. Critical race theory is not, it's a theory. It's not a practice. And we should not be implementing this in K to 12. And then we'll end it with the other piece of it is, how do you create that diversity? You know, when there is none, when we're talking about eighty-three percent white people, how do you bring diversity in? And that's where you, as a parent, have to take your kids and be part of a community. You have to be friends. You play baseball in a different grouping. Like we played baseball in other communities. My brother, he's in Springfield. He plays in another league too at times. Like, you know, you gotta give your kids those experiences. And if you want certain things, then you as a parent have that right to go and do it. Don't bring the political end of this diversity, equity, inclusion into our schools. I think clubs are great for kids that are in high school. They get to experience different things. But to continually push an agenda in our schools, diversity, equity, inclusion, like who doesn't want every kid to feel welcome? You know, they're great words and what the meaning behind them is pretty dangerous. And when we start saying people are oppressed and segregating people, I got a big problem with that. And my township administration and our school board created an anti-racist resolution and called my town racist.
Right.
And I want to know where, how, when are we racist?
Right. I think the issue is, it's not just we're looking for inclusion and equity and diversity or equality. It's that next step where then you're scapegoating, then you're stereotyping entire groups. And it's like, it's that extra step that seems to be the problem with most people. It's not just about bringing people together and having diversity, but then you're insinuating that entire groups of people are privileged or racist or inherently racist and things like that. That seems to be my experience with it. But I like what you're saying with the organic, like when your kids are just in communities and they're playing sports and they're doing things just organically and naturally, like that's how you can learn this stuff, rather than having this critical theory put in and almost forced in a way that's just not organic. And sometimes it's polarizing and divisive.
And I keep saying that it's polarizing, it's divisive, this is Marxism. And our kids do not need to have this. Our kids are anxious enough. You know, we have kids today that have increased anxiety. I mean, this is through the board. And then I look at curriculum too. And I think, when we have kids coming up to the high school level that can't read, that's a problem, right? Those kids, they're anxious because in third grade, you're no longer learning to read. You're reading to learn. So how about those minds? The math has been so confusing. Common Core has, I'm sorry to say, I feel like it's been a failure for our generations, past generations, because they don't really know math. And you say, oh, they experience it and experiment with it. While by the time they get to high school, they're really struggling, you know, and then you have to put, pay for your child to go into, you know, a class so that they learn the math for the SATs. Um, you know, and then how equitable is that, right? I mean, we're helping our kids. And so the parents that can afford it, that's what they're doing. Um, you know, we need to really look at anything that we implement, anything we implement at any time. We have to look at the long term effects. It can't be fads. We can't have fads in education. Or I always say this, my grandparents and my parents' math got us to the moon, you know, and that's amazing. Um, and that's what we really need to to be realistic. And list, and unfortunately, teachers aren't always listened to. You know, and I think we know, you know, we know kids, we get to see what happens. We know what works, what we, we know what doesn't work. And um, you know, I think we need to start standing our ground as educators and saying, this isn't acceptable. This isn't gonna work. And we're not doing this to kids. And I know there are have been several teachers that I have met with throughout Pennsylvania that are afraid, that are saying that we know that this is wrong and how can we help? And parent and teachers that are saying, I'm leaving the field. Um, and some people are great teachers. I would hate for people to leave. You know, because we're, we need to stand our grounds, you know, and say like, this is wrong. This is really not okay.
It seems like critical race theory and this whole idea um, is based on systems, systemic, you know, systemic racism, systemic injustice. And then when you bring up more individual things, they always say, you know, individualism, meritocracy, and they shift it always back to systems. It's really heavy on systems. So if you, if in your opinion, what should the breakdown be? Because obviously you have to look at patterns. If if you have, if you have certain disparities in the races, you you'd want to look at patterns so you could see where where we would need to make up gaps like the achievement gap. But in your opinion, how much should we be looking at systems and how much should we be focusing on individual like skills and things that you could say would be universal principles and values? Things that would transcend identity, like what would the balance be?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, the system's broken. I think that we need to look at, you know, individual students and we need to look at the data. Um, and I think we haven't done that. And I think at one point they started to look at the data and then they realized, uh-oh, this something's not working. So they abandoned it. And so now we have kids that are behind in math and reading. So I think, you know, the systems approach isn't, is never good because let's, let's look at families, right? My, I have three children, all who were very different individuals and they have the same parents, right? They're different people. We apply a lot of the same principles to each child, but yet they're different, right? So then we have to have those bend and curves because what what my daughter might need, my son doesn't necessarily need or or vice versa. And so when we we talk about systems, like let's be real. There are people that make up the system.
Absolutely.
And and people make decisions. Do all people make right decisions? No. And and so once you're talking about systems, you're talking about systems of people. And when we look at organizational behavior, it takes seven years for a system to change. Um, so what we need are good leaders in education. And and that's gonna start with our teachers. We're gonna have to do a ground up approach and say, this kid kid needs A, B and C. We need to go back to teaching the basics. You know, and we do need to have that understanding and building relationships in the classroom with our students, you know. That really is important. I have kids that come in to my classroom that had a bad day and might say, you know, screw you today and 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 use more colorful language than that. And then two days later, I might get the apology. And I have other kids that are just not going to give me ever an apology and that they're just who they are. And so I come in with a smile every day and teach them. And I think that majority of teachers are like that, you know, we're gonna work with our students. And it has to be database systems. And let's go back to the old way of when we looked at curriculum that was research based and could be replicated. And I'm not talking research based by um, an organization that the company pays for, you know, the publishing company. But the a academia, you know, the colleges are miss, starting to miss that mark and 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 we need the curriculum, although it's, some of it is new. Um, I think old ways work and people always want to invent new ideas and I I and I welcome that, you know, change is good. However, are we taking data when we make the changes and are we willing to say, hey, we need to make, we need to go back to doing this because the data is showing it's not working. And clearly when America is no longer a superpower and um, I I forget if we're like thirty-fourth in education, like I I can't remember, but that to me has been, you know, striking at my heart because today we have so many tools available for kids to continue to learn, um, for kids with disabilities to be successful and to be challenged. And we're falling off the mark, you know, and we have, we have things that are available to us.
What what are some of the things besides, it sounds like one of the big, your your big points is transparency for the school district. You want to make sure it's transparent so that this, so that the teachers know, the community knows exactly what's going on in the curriculum. Um, so transparency, when you're talking about critical race theory, it's more about equality, giving people equal opportunities and an organic, natural way to have diversity rather than kind of maybe forced things or things that aren't exactly organic and natural or that polarize. And you you mentioned a blend of systemic, but also individual things. What are, what are some of the things that you would also like to add? That would be your issues on your platform as running for this seat on the school board?
I mean, I I I think the big, like you're saying, the biggest thing is transparency. The, the, you know, the second largest, you know, issue I think is for me is the special education, you know, those kids to have, you know, equal and fair treatment and to have programming that shows, you know, they're making progress, you know, and it is an individualized education plan and it should be used as that. And so I do think that that is really important. And then the third thing is fiscal responsibility. You know, when you're implementing programs or you're purchasing curriculum, teachers should be appropriately using those programs. Because what happens is when you were not using them appropriately and then we call using it with integrity, then the kids are not going to necessarily learn or have the outcomes that we usually see. Again, going back to people, right? People make mistakes, people, you know, make changes. Um, so that is really what, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible and not start, you know, we purchased this curriculum, then we purchased that curriculum. You know, we need to make sure what we're using is appropriate. Um, we're not, you know, double dipping. I call it, you know, you have, you know, three equity contracts, you know, how many do you really need? We have several contracts with a varied uh, lawyer groups. Again, how much money is that costing us as taxpayers? Um, so I really do think that a lot of that needs to be looked at. So fiscal responsibility is also part of it.
Definitely. It's definitely very important uh, part of it. All right. So this is interesting. I learned some things and I've I've uh, been teaching myself for twenty-five years and you brought, you brought up some good points and I agree with a lot of it, but I I learned some things today. Is there anything you want to finish with? Any last words before we kind of close up?
No, I really thank you for your time. I enjoy listening to your, to your uh, what do you call the little podcasts and your vlogs. Um, so I really do enjoy them and I can't wait to get your new book, The Toolkit. And to look at that. So I'm, it's probably gonna be something, you know, that we can hand out to families too. I'm hoping to get, you know, some uh, donations and so that we can purchase it and give it to some of the parents in the community. Especially now that our superintendent has said that they're not teaching CRT in our school.
Right, yeah, that's the, that's always the line. It's not really there, but it's it's under some other word or semantics. All right. Well, thanks for for uh, for coming on and answering the questions. It seems like your your platform is pretty, pretty clear and and people can get a better understanding of uh, how you, how you feel.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
Take care.